Is ten o'clock, I'm gonna call this Monday, April twenty 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 three. Board of Equalization meeting for order. First, uh, oh, well, we'll do a roll call first. Uh, Mr. Brett Towns.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Eleanor Thompson.
Here.
And I'm Patrick Crowley up here. Okay, uh, let's see, first thing to discuss a possible action regarding approval of the minutes of April seventh and April tenth, twenty twenty three. Any, any, uh, discussion?
I move acceptance of the, uh, meetings. Minutes, I'm sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, alright.
Alright, the second thing, we got two properties, uh, today. Uh, first one, uh, uh, is BOE number sixty five. Do we have?
He is gonna be by phone?
No, he's.
And I, but I want him right now.
Okay.
This is Mr. Christopher Brooks.
Yeah.
Hello?
Mr. Brooks?
Yep.
This is Patrick Crowley, I'm chairman of the, uh, Board of Equalization in Oklahoma County. And we have, uh, your property on our agenda today. Uh, BOE number sixty five, which is property of thirty one oh nine Big Oak Drive in Midwest City. The assessor has assessed that property at a hundred and seventy thousand five hundred. And you're asking us to set it at a hundred and thirty five thousand, is that correct?
Uh, that's essentially correct, yes, I'm asking you to set it at a proper amount, I don't know if it's a hundred and thirty five, a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty five.
Well, we're just, I'm just going off of the numbers that you put on the, uh, appeal. Uh, you wanna change that number, or you're good with one thirty five right now?
Uh, right now, I'm good with one thirty five.
Okay, have you appeared before the board before?
No, sir, I haven't.
Okay, well, we're fairly informal, but we have to follow the statutes. Uh, what we'll do is we'll hear from you about what you wanna tell us about that property, then we'll hear from the assessor, who will explain why he come up with his value. And then, uh, you'll have an opportunity to respond. I will tell you that the board here, there's three of us here. Uh, we don't work for the county, we don't work for the assessor. We are simply, uh, appointed to the board by various entities. And, uh, uh, we just look at what the fair market value of the, of the property is, you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, tell us what you want us to know about your property.
Okay, uh. Uh, I bought the property, uh, from my, from my mother, uh, she and my father bought the property back in, uh, late nineteen seventies. Uh, so it was our family home, uh, and they lived there, uh, my dad lived there the rest of his life. Uh, he just passed away last year, and, uh, you know, recently, um, uh, so, uh, as for me, I, I, you know, we were a military family, we set our roots in Midwest City. I attended Midwest City High School, and graduated, went on to the Air Force Academy in Colorado. Served in the airports, and then, uh, went to get higher education in California. That's where I live now, that's where I'm at right now, Chicago, Oklahoma. Uh, I have a son, he, uh, visited Oklahoma, he was looking at, uh, O U S potential school, he was in there, lived with my parents for, uh, summer, and enjoyed the time there. Uh, the only reason, uh, my mother left Oklahoma, and then my father passing away, is because she had fears of tornadoes and being by herself, uh, and so she needed to move. Uh, I'm an only sibling with a, only, only child with a, with a, with a child, so, you know, my goal was to get her to move out here to California, where I could take care of her. Uh, and we looked at houses out here, uh, she and my sister came out here, and we looked at houses, and they're just too expensive out here. And, uh, so, we were trying to figure out a way she could sell her property, be able to downsize and move without going crazy. And, uh, she was stuck because she couldn't have time to downsize, and have time to move. And so, uh, I contacted my brothers and sisters, my brother and sister, and, you know, said, hey, maybe we can buy this property. Uh, they weren't interested, uh, because my brother lives in Florida and knows the climate there, and my sister lives in Arizona, and she loved the climate there, climate there. And they didn't wanna, you know, be subject to tornadoes and having the property wiped out, uh, so, uh, but since it was family property, something that I enjoyed, something my son enjoyed, I tried to find out what the property value would be, and to, uh, make it, make it a purchase. Uh, if it wasn't affordable, I wouldn't have ever do it, but, uh, contacted a real estate agent. She showed me what the comps were in the area, I think in my paperwork, it says it's between like a hundred and thirty dollars, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and a hundred and forty five, a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars.
Right, all that, all that background is, is interesting, I appreciate it, but what we wanna know is, what, what, how are you coming to a hundred and thirty five thousand on this particular piece of property? Uh, and I can tell you right now, the purchase from your mom is not gonna be what we call a valid arms length transaction. I will, I will note that last year's value was a hundred and forty eight thousand, and you're asking for, uh, what, thirteen thousand less than what it was last year?
Okay, I, I appreciate that, sir, I, I was gonna go into that very next point, uh.
Okay.
You know, when you talk about arms length, uh, I understand that the purchase from a family member is not generally considered an arms length, uh, situation. Uh, try as I might, I can't disassociate myself from, from my family, I've got who, that's whose house it was, you wanted to keep the house because it's our house. Uh, and what I wanted to say, you know, I, I did as much as I could to make this as arms length as humanly possible, I can't disassociate myself from my family.
Okay.
So, uh, other, you know, so I tried to get as, as, as arms length as possible. Uh, when I contacted my brother and sister, it was so that I would not be cheating her, when I talked to my mother, it was so I would not be cheating her.
Okay.
There was no goal to set a lower price, so she couldn't afford to move to where she needed to move, and the whole goal was to give her enough money in a fair manner, so that she could move to a place where she was gonna be comfortable, and she ended up moving to the East Coast, and my sister ended up, uprooting herself, and moved to the East Coast to take care of my mother, so, I know, I, there, uh, we did as much as humanly possible with the arms length.
Okay, what's, what's the square footage of this house?
I have to go with what, uh, what you guys have told, what, uh, what, uh, the, the other party said, and they said it's fifteen eighty eight. I have never measured the house, and, you know, so they said it's fifteen eighty eight, so I assume that's correct.
Right, we used to live in, you grew up in that house, right?
Right, but I, I, I mean, I'm not trying to be flippant, I never measured it, I mean, it's three bedrooms, it's one, one full bathroom, and a bathroom with, uh, with a shower and a tub, a two-car garage, and it's never been modified, there's not, if you walked into that house on, in nineteen seventy nine, and you walked into it two thousand twenty three, it's the same house, there's nothing, nothing's changed. Uh, there's no, the kitchen has still got the orange or yellow laminate countertops, uh, you know, maybe the microwave has changed, maybe the microwave broke, the carpet's been replaced. And that, last month, the, the, my neighbor went to the house, uh, and, uh, and the water was just running, just running, 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 she couldn't shut it off. The, the, the washers inside the wall had deteriorated, and the, my house, it was just going into the tub and out, out, out of the, out of the house. I mean, this is not, uh, I mean, I love this house, you know, uh, it's, it's, it was where my mother and dad lived. Uh, but I, it hasn't, I'm, I'm not trying to denigrate the house, I'm just saying, we, when we looked at the prices, that's what the realtor said the fair market price was. And so that's what we, that's what we use, uh, and, you know, you're telling me it's one hundred and forty eight thousand at that time? I don't, I know that prices changed during the season, and we were looking in December, February, and March, the sale happened in March, so, you know, other houses were going at those rates, like I said, one thirty to one forty five, and because I was doing cash, we went lower than that, and because of the age of the house, uh, and the condition of the house, she suggested I go with the lower amount, which was one hundred and thirty thousand.
Alright, do you have the house rented?
No.
Okay, it's vacant?
It's vacant, yes.
Okay.
I have a neighbor across the street, that's my mom's good friend, that has the keys, and, you know, if there's something that's going on, then, you know, she can, she can, uh, you know, do that. The goal is at some point to rent it, but it's gotta be rented first.
Have, have you got, have you got it listed for sale?
No, I intend to rent it, I mean, I, I, my goal is, when I retire, is to be able to move back to Midwest City after living the house, but prior to that, if I can get it, rent it, and, uh, you know, have some income off of that, that would be, you know, that would be wonderful, that would be the goal.
Okay.
Uh, so.
It's currently not rented?
No, it's not.
Okay, alright, and, and then I understand what you're saying, that house is, uh, pretty much, uh, you know, basically speaking, uh, the same house you grew up in?
Yes, that's true.
Alright, changed microwave, changes, uh, may have replaced the carpet, uh?
Definitely replaced the carpet, yeah, no, 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 uh, you know, that open living thing that people are doing, and the marble countertops, none of that, none of that, none of that, you know?
Alright.
No upgrades to anything, just, you know, just the same house they moved into.
Alright, and it's got the old nineteen seventies, uh, countertops?
That's true, yeah, and there's, there's cracks, and there's, uh, you know, and the, the, you know, both, you know, what I'm trying to hopefully do in the next couple of months, uh, is to renovate the bathrooms, uh, you know, the counters need to be replaced, the cabinets need to be replaced, uh, you know, the, the kitchen is still usable, as, as it is, but, you know, it needs to, at some point, it's gonna need to be upgraded, but it's not gonna happen before I start renting it, or, you know, it, you know, that's gonna be, you know, cost, it's gonna be costly.
Okay.
So, uh, I, so I, you know, I contacted, you know, I'll, I'll move ahead in the story, I'm sorry for taking up so much of your time. Uh, when I got the notice, uh, you know, I, I was in, I was in Maryland, uh, trying to help my mother get moved in, or, I don't know what I was there for, I was there. Uh, my son contacted me, and he said, you know, we've got this notice, you know, and it says we gotta do something within thirty days, and that, you know, like twenty of those days had already gone by, and so I contacted people to see, hey, can I get a continuance? Is there some kind of a additional amount of time we're having them to be mailed from Oklahoma to California, you know? And they were like, no, you know, we have thirty days.
I'll just, I'll, I'll let you know it's a jurisdictional thing, there has to, appeal has to be filed kindly. If it's not, then we don't have jurisdiction to hear it. Uh, whatever the reason is, the, uh, you, you have to file it timely, and apparently you got it done.
Yes, no problem with that, I was just, you know, I was just stunned that there was no, no, like, oh, yeah, we can reschedule this, or, you know, whatever, uh, you know, so I, I, you know, asked the gentleman, I believe it was on that phone call, I spoke to the gentleman named Chris, whether it was on that phone call or for a different phone call. And he said, you know, hey, that, you know, he'll probably, you know, whoever gets this informal here will probably, you know, be willing to go out and take a look at the property. So that was like a big size release, like, okay, alright, and, you know, woo, you know, because these numbers, it was, you could see the number, one hundred and seventy thousand five hundred dollars versus, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that I paid, and it was, you know, like, that's, that's a huge jump.
Well, that's, that's why that, that's why that purchase is invalid, you know, because with your mother, now, I understand you weren't trying to cheat her or anything, but that's, you know, the value you guys came up to, that doesn't matter. Uh, what matters is that it's a family purchase, even if you had to purchase it, uh, for more than that. Uh, because it's a family thing, it's, it's considered invalid. Uh, now, if, uh, we got an idea of what you're talking about, the seventies, pretty much is what that house looks like on the inside. Uh, but, a- and we understand what that is. Now, you need to know that they can't go out, the, the assessor can't go out and assess, go out and physically look at a house just because it's on appeal. They, they do it, I don't know, there's a rotation thing where they go look at this property. But they have to, they have to assess every piece of property in Oklahoma County. And we're talking about residential and, uh, commercial. So, there's just physically no way they could go do that. But, you know, we, we know pretty much what you're talking about on, uh, this particular house. Uh, now, uh, you, you, anything else on the house, uh, that you want us to tell us about?
Uh, I'll, I'll just make two more points if I could, sir. Uh, you know, and I'm sure you, you take all this into consideration, that, you know, the roof, I think, is like twelve years old, so that's one quick point. But, uh, if I can address the, the report that I was given by the assessor's office, you know, they looked at, I don't know, but when I talked to the gentleman on the phone, he said they looked at twelve properties in the area down the six, and some other stuff. Uh, and, uh, one of the properties, the report that I have, that I, I got raised in my appeal paperwork, was that one of them is valued at, you know, a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and twenty four, or some hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, I don't know what the, what the process is, uh, but, you know, I'm saying that it's, that my property is valued at one hundred and thirty five thousand. And they're saying, well, we've got, you know, one at one hundred and twenty one thousand dollars, I don't understand why there's, why I'm just wrong from the start, I mean, this hearing that I had on the, on the, I was engaged with, you know, hearing occurred, gentleman, uh, ran through whatever it was, he was saying really quickly, and then ruled against me, and then that same day sent out the notice, uh, from, you know, with this, with this, you know, with this report. And it was like, so I just want a Friday, you've got two days left, and you would have normally, or whatever, and, you know, I've got fifteen days to start. Uh, you know, I mean, it was, maybe that's the way it's supposed to work, but, but, you know, again, my point is that there's a property that's at a hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. Why am I wrong? Uh, you know, uh, and I guess my fear is that next year, this person, whose house was maybe two or three houses down from the house that I have, is close point one mile, uh, that, uh, about that, uh, one zero three seven Big Oak Drive, the same street, it's down the street, that they're gonna get the same treatment, that there's gonna be some determination that their house that sold recently, had one hundred and twenty one thousand dollars, is now worth one hundred and seventy eight, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I, I don't know that the market can seriously move that quickly, uh, and that, and that's all I can say.
Okay, alright, well, we'll hear from the assessor now, uh, and you'll have a chance to respond to the assessor, okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we'll hear from the assessor.
Well, as, as already been discussed, this was an invalid purchase between related parties, and it is still in the family. Um, the owner did provide a couple of, uh, comparables. Um, one of the comparables he did provide was a twenty twenty two sale of a hundred and eighteen thousand. Well, the problem with that one is, is that that one is at one thousand seventy three square foot, so it's considerably smaller than his. So, we can't use that one at all, we, we could, but we found ones that are much closer in value, and adjustments were very minimal. And he provided another one in, um, for forty seven oh four Newport Drive in two thousand eighteen, but that one sold in two thousand eighteen, and we've got more recent one to support that. The comp report we came up with supports a median value of a hundred and seventy five thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars, which puts them at one hundred and seven dollars and thirty six cents price per square foot. Um, and he did, yeah, we did, one of the comps that he did mention was ten thirty seven Big Oak Drive, which was a one hundred and twenty one thousand dollar sales price, and when we make adjustments, um, it comes in at a hundred and twenty seven thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. But we, you know, if, if that was the only comp, then there might be a, there might be a case, problem is, we found six comparables, so we had five others we could go off of. We have one on at, and if I'm going too fast, please tell me.
Um, well, wait a minute, there, there is some, something that he said that seems to be an argument with what I've got. What is, what did you assess the value of this house?
Okay, um, he is on for one hundred and seventy thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I should have mentioned that at first.
That was the median he was giving.
Yeah, you were, that's what I thought you were, but then, you know, as you were going, you said you, that was what you.
Right, no, because we have him under what the median is right now.
Got it.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay.
Um, one of the comps I wanted to mention was point three two miles away on twenty eight oh four Dell Arboe Drive in Midwest City. We have it at the same quality, we have it, we have the subject at one thousand five hundred eighty eight square feet. Uh, this comp is at one thousand five hundred and twenty six square feet, so slightly smaller. Uh, it sold, uh, in October of last year at, at, um, a hundred and seventy nine thousand five hundred dollars, and, um.
Dell Arboe is quite a ways from this particular piece of property.
Right, but the problem is, we're having to, uh, not every property that's gonna be close to his is going to be the same. We have to kinda go out of the neighborhood a little bit to kind of, uh, get properties that are, um, comparable to his, but as, so, but actually, we're actually pulling from, uh, the same neighborhood.
For whatever reason, I do not have your comparables in this in my stuff.
Could you put those up on the screen?
Yes, I will put those up on the screen.
I don't have them either.
I don't know why we don't have that, but.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, unless they just got misputting in the document that was sent over, right?
Now, Big Oak is, that comparable to is close. And what do you have for value on it, like you have to try to look?
Ten thirty seven Big Oak Drive, it sold for a hundred and twenty one, and the adjustment, the adjustment on that is one twenty seven, six eleven.
But it's twelve hundred square feet.
Thir- one thousand three ninety eight.
Fourteen.
Right, but that's just one comp, and now we're.
What is that address?
It is ten thirty seven Big Oak Drive.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna show a map of where everything is at compared to but here's everything, here's sub, here's number one, number two, three, four, five, and six, and here's the subject, and we have, we've got him in the, uh, same neighborhood as the other comps, so.
Mike, what was, what was the date of his sale?
Of?
When he bought it from his parents?
Yes, uh, March thirty first of twenty two.
So it's like just a year ago?
Yes.
March twenty two, and was it thirty or twenty, was it one thirty or one twenty?
One twenty.
One twenty. But other than just what has been specified earlier, the value for twenty two was a hundred and forty eight thousand. But, other than that, that's all I have, uh, as of right now, based on the summary of the comparables, and if there's anything else that you always wanna look at. I apologize for not submitting that information.
But it, it appears in what you're saying is that from last year, this house appreciated over twenty two thousand dollars?
Yes, and based on the, uh, sales that we're going off of, we can support that.
But not on Big Oak?
No, that's, but that's just one, that's just one property.
Yeah, I mean, in the neighborhood where Big Oak is.
Correct.
You don't have any, you have to go.
Yeah, dude, I have five others, yeah, everything in, sorry. All these comparables are in the same neighborhood, that's only twenty two.
Okay, and what's, what's the, what value of, uh, number six? Because I don't have, I, I don't have that.
No, I apologize, yes, I agree. Um, sorry, let me go up there for you, do it that way.
For clarification, I did check, and, um, I did send off the info request, but did not receive one back, so it was probably just missed.
So, uh, comparable number six sold for, it's one thousand three hundred and sixty square feet, it sold for a hundred and sixty nine thousand?
A hundred and sixty nine thousand?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
In November of last year.
Okay. And five, where's Cedar Hill Place?
So, let me pull down the map, um, here is Cedar Hill Place, where the red arrow is at, and here's the subject. And it sold for a hundred and seventy thousand in February of last year.
Mike, what's the nearest major intersection?
Oh, sorry, here we go. Mid, North Midwest Boulevard and East Reno.
Okay.
Okay, now, I'm getting a little bit confused here. Be, uh, your comp number six, you're saying sold in February of twenty two?
No, comp number six sold in November of twenty two.
Okay.
For a hundred and sixty nine thousand.
For a hundred and sixty nine thousand, okay.
And it's two hundred square foot, smaller than the subject house.
Correct.
Okay. And what do we got for five? Oh, that's one we just talked about.
Yes, sir.
And number four?
Sold for one hundred and seventy thousand in October of twenty two.
Sold for what?
One hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay. And where is that?
So that's number four.
I'm not familiar, I should be familiar with these streets, but they're not.
That's okay, here's, here's the subject property, number four is right over here.
Okay. It's virtually down the street, but it's a different street.
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. I have, I've got a handful of things, I think, okay, so you took all these comps that you got that are fairly comparable to the subject property?
Yes, sir.
And you came up with a hundred and seventy thousand five hundred?
Well, we came up with a, well, he's on for one seventy five hundred, we came up with a median of one seventy five, seven thirty six, let me, here we go, right here's your information.
Seven thirty six?
One hundred and seventy five thousand seven hundred thirty six.
Okay. Alright, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir.
Did you hear all that?
I did.
Okay, uh, have you got anything that you wanna respond to the assessor's evidence with?
Uh, just two things, uh, please, uh, first, the, I didn't, I didn't provide him with the information about, uh, ten thirty seven Big Oak Drive, that was in the report that they sent to me. And, uh, you know, that's, I, I saw the price, and I was like, why, why am I wrong? And then, uh, second point is that, uh, I provided with, uh, them with, I, I'm not a realtor, so I just went online and looked at what, you know, I'm trying to figure out what's going on with this information, so I went online and looked at property values right then, right there, what was being sold on Zillow, or whatever the other different companies were. I think the company name is on the, on the stuff I submitted to them. And there were properties that were better than my, my house, and, uh, I, I don't think they were right down the street, but there was one for, uh, on Newport Drive for a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars, uh, And it's a two-story in Dell City, so it's not right down the street. Uh, but I, you know, I tried to show them, you've got houses that are better than mine on sale right now for a hundred fifty thousand dollars and aren't selling. And I'm kind of, how, you know, help me out here, they, I don't understand what's going on. And so, uh, and they, well, I can, you know, we took everything into consideration, and this is, this was the value. Uh, there was another house, I mean, these were on the market for sixty days, ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, and weren't selling. And that's all I'm saying, like, the property value of my house couldn't have jumped to a hundred seventy thousand dollars realistically, if these houses can't sell at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they're better than my house. I, I just couldn't, I was trying to get my handle on it, and they just couldn't, they didn't give me any, any kind of faith or support, but this calculation they had, and then one of the, one of the calculations was a hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. I didn't provide that, they provided it. These were not sold in two thousand eighteen, these were housed or technically sold. In, in March, it, whenever I got this notice, that's what, that's what, that's what these houses represent, not five thousand, it's two thousand. I don't know where they're getting this two, two thousand eighteen information. Uh, in that, I provided the, the, all the information that I, they all, like, uh, what they sold for in the past, and that's where they're getting it from. Uh, but that's what was there, and so I'm just showing, like, on one of them, I think the house exactly sold for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I'm like, I don't know how he sold it to a hundred fifty thousand dollars before, but right now he can't get a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And so that, that was my point, and I, you know, the, where I thought the property, the value was, what I, what I said it was. And that's all I can do.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I think we understand what you're saying. Uh, anything different that you want to tell us about this property?
Uh, nothing else I know about it, you're.
Okay, all right, uh, I appreciate you, Mr. Brooks, you were well-prepared for this hearing. And, uh, what will happen is Friday, right, yeah, Friday, a letter will go out as to, the board will meet, uh, again on Friday, it's what we call Decision Day, where we will, uh, reach a market value, what we believe to be the fair market value of this property between the three of us. Uh, and then a letter will go out as to what those, that finding was. Uh, on Friday, you'll probably get it Saturday or Monday, depending on your mail service, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, well, you're in California, so then, I'm not sure what happens there.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate, uh, your introduction, uh, letting me know what, where you guys are standing, what your positions are. And, uh, appreciate you, uh, giving me additional information along the way. Uh, thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask?
Go ahead.
No, this is just, uh, information.
Okay.
We will need, I would like to see the comparables.
Yeah, I, usually I, I get all that stuff sent to you, and you know, just.
Sure, I, I understand it just, it just got missing, we had the same issue on the next property too, so we like to do those.
So it looks like what had happened is, um, at least for that one, I haven't checked on the next one. Uh, that was one of those where I'd sent a lot of them with the Ryan LLC ones, and perhaps you just saw all the Ryan LLCs and had accidentally disregarded that, so I don't know if that's what happened with the next one, but I did check, it was sent off, but I did not receive.
Yeah, no problem, just actually study these before Decision Day.
Yeah, they'll leave, they'll leave all that.
Oh, and once this, once I get back upstairs, I'll send the comparables for both of these properties together.
Yes, yeah, and if you do notice ahead of time that any of those aren't there, we can always check it for him. Awesome.
All right, okay, well, we're gonna close the hearing on BOE number sixty-five. And, uh, is Mr. Brooks still there?
I don't, I.
Okay, all right, uh, and I'll open up the hearing on BOE ninety-four, which is the property at eighty-nine forty-nine Northeast Fifty-second. Doyle and Barbara Ragsdale, are they here?
Yes, sir.
All right, there, one or both of you can come up here and, uh, and have a seat.
I think I'll do it today.
Uh, good, sir, thank you. Uh, we kind of, you heard how this, this one went. Now, a lot of the information that's being provided doesn't mean much, you know, the background and all that, what, you know, what we want to know is what, how did you come up with your value of sixty-seven thousand two hundred for this property? The, the, uh, the assessor had it at a hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred, looks like they came down to a hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred.
That's right.
And is all that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, and.
I didn't sign affidavit, I need to say something, sorry.
Okay, yep, that's all right.
I filled out the paperwork that's sent back into you guys with what we thought it was worth. He just told me it was a little low on that, I said I put what you told me to put, but, so we weren't, we weren't.
When we first, uh, and it's really no excuse, and I don't want to sound like it is, but I've been through health issues, and they just took my right kidney a couple of weeks ago, so. It's from cancer, but anyhow, uh.
Did they get all the cancer?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, that was a good day.
There was a kind of a misunderstanding there, because when the first appeal was, uh, filed with them, I believe I had the value at eighty, eighty-some thousand, I believe, wasn't it, or something like that?
I have sixty-eight thousand.
Sixty-eight at the first appeal?
Yeah, that's what you, uh, had put on here, you requested sixty-eight.
Okay, well, but anyhow, I've, I've pulled, I've pulled some comps, and, and not only that, but the comps that, that they sent me with the pictures and, and all that, of the square footage, and, and after they dropped the value down to a, a hundred and eleven eight hundred, which, uh, puts that eight hundred and fifty square foot home at, at a hundred and thirty-one dollars a square foot. Uh, the comps that they sent down, the average on the, on the four comps with the pictures that come from the assessors, if you break them averages down, uh, them four comps averaged ninety-six dollars a square foot from them. They're, they're comping off of. So I don't, I don't quite understand how my little eight hundred and fifty square foot house, and, and they're comping off of eleven hundred and twenty-five on sale number one, sale number two is a thousand and eighty-eight square foot, uh, sale number three is a thousand and fifty-six square foot, and comp number four is nine hundred and seventy-one square feet. And them averaged, like I said, between the four at ninety-six dollars a square foot, that's quite a difference between a hundred and thirty-one and, and ninety-six, I mean, I, you don't, don't get me wrong, I, I don't have a problem one parent paying fair market, but I just don't feel that that's fair from the comps that come from them. And I have the pictures here of the homes. And, and then I went back and, and I pulled comps, and, uh, averaged, they averaged out at about seventy-eight dollars a square foot, you know, and, and I'm pulling these comps within, with, within the town of Spencer, where, where the house is at. And, and then I went back, and I didn't, I didn't, uh, I didn't write no addresses or nothing down, but I went back for twenty-two months and checked prices on, on, on the homes uh, that had sold in the, in the area that I'm in for the last twenty-two months. And them averages that, on the homes that sold, was about eighty-six dollars a square feet in, in that town of Spencer. There was some that got up close to a hundred dollars a square foot, but them had at least an acre or two acres with them, of property, which I can understand would make the value more, so, uh.
And Spencer's not a big town, it's not a big town with a lot of homes like Midwest City is.
Real familiar with.
How are you? How, how big is your lot?
My lot is, uh, seventy-five foot wide. And it's one hundred and I believe.
Point two four one acres.
Yeah, a hundred and seventy-some feet deep, something like that.
What, what do you have it at?
Point two four one acres.
Okay, right at a quarter of an acre. So, uh, and they have on record, we, we purchased the house, uh, for a thousand dollars. It was in bad, bad shape.
I don't know if you'll have pictures of those, it was pretty bad.
You know, we went in and, and, uh, you know, I, when I was talking to Mike.
There's where.
County Assessor's Office, I mean, there's, there's the pictures of the old house. And, uh, we went in and, and basically put new windows and new siding, and, and there's the used sheet rock that went in it, it was in the house.
Yeah, we didn't have to buy sheet rock.
Uh, so, you know, it, it's, it's quite a difference from what it looked like when we bought it, but it's still a nineteen fifty-nine structure. And they kept saying it was new construction, new construction is made when you break the ground and you start from scratch and you build new.
For the, how they assess it, value, and that's, if not, relying, yeah, what you're saying, because it was built and set.
Yeah.
When it's completely remodeled, which apparently this was, that changes the effective age of, of the property according to the assessor's office, and we'll, we'll hear from them in a year, but that's why it changed.
Okay.
Is this a rental?
No, sir.
Living in it?
We, well, we, we actually live in Ufala, and, uh, our grandkids are close.
To this house.
We, we, we had a fistwheel that we used to drag back and forth and, and come and visit our grandkids, and it got so expensive on fuel, we decided we'd buy this little house, and, and we just come up and.
And we both have health issues, so, and our mom is up here.
We just come up and, her mom's getting old and, and lives in Spencer, so we wanted something where if it got to the point that she needed care, we could be close, and that's, that's all we use it for, I mean.
Grandkids are living in?
No, 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 they live down the street.
They live down the street.
They can ride the bikes to see us, it's pretty cute.
So.
All right, you said earlier that you, did you have a new value that you wanted to place on this rather than sixty-seven two?
Yeah, I, you know, I feel, I feel that the house should be, my, my opinion, it should be somewhere around in the eighty to eighty-five thousand dollar range.
Yeah, pick one or the other.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, we, we've got to have a.
They're eighty-two five, just go in the middle.
Yeah, I'd just say, I'd just say eight thousand.
Eight thousand even.
Yep. And if, you know, if you break that down, that's still, that's still getting up there, that's getting up there to their average of their comps per square foot for what they're, what they sent me.
How many square feet in the house?
Eight hundred and fifty square foot, sir.
Okay. Again, we did, I, I'm.
You didn't have all the pressure.
Yeah, we, I, we don't have the assessors.
That's, that's mine.
Info for whatever reason, and, uh, makes it kind of difficult for us to, but we're gonna get it.
Yeah.
Uh, as I said earlier, we decide this on Friday, well, we've got to have all the evidence in front of us that we're, that's relevant.
Okay.
There is, there is one other thing I want to bring up, and I believe it sold, I don't know if you can pull it up. The house right next door to us, which is eighty-nine thirty-nine Northeast Fifty-second, which is a rock home. Uh, it just sold, I'm thinking it was in November. Uh, it's twenty-seven hundred and fifty square foot.
You're on fifty-first there, you're maybe on fifty-second.
No, it just sold in, in, I think, around November.
Yeah, it was around Thanksgiving.
Ten hundred and forty thousand dollars, which brings it to eighty-six dollars a square foot, which is right next door to me, and it's a rock home.
It sold for two hundred and forty thousand?
Two hundred and forty, and it's twenty-seven hundred and fifty square feet.
It's a, it's a big home.
Rock home.
It's a big home.
It's a big home, but I mean, it's right next door to me, so I mean, that's, it, it's back to that deal where their comps showed ninety-six, and that sold for eighty-six, so, uh,
Yeah.
Uh, uh, that's a long ways from one thirty-one where I'm at right now.
Okay, now, the, the larger the square footage, generally the cost of it comes down.
The square footage cost comes down?
Yeah, uh, ordinarily, now depending on what you're doing, but.
Okay.
That's a, if you look at a five thousand square foot home next to a three thousand square foot home, the five thousand square foot home, that price per square foot may be less than the three thousand. I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying that ordinarily that's what.
Why is that, I wonder?
Because the larger the square footage of the house, the less it's going to cost you to build as opposed to one that's smaller. Because, you know, they got all people there.
Yeah, yeah, I understand now, yeah.
Really, you're just talking about space.
Yeah, I understand now, okay, all right.
All right.
I will, I will say one other thing, when we put the re-done in place, uh, we had, which, I got receipts here that was sent to them.
I, we got a cop, I got, I got all your stuff, I got all these receipts.
Oh, you did, yeah, there was a ton of them.
We had, we had, we had a little, little over sixty, sixty-two thousand dollars in place when we got done with, you know, so, and, uh.
On the remodel cost, sixty-two thousand?
Yes.
Okay, and what was it purchased for?
One thousand.
You purchased it for a thousand dollars?
The house and moved it.
And moved it.
No, we didn't move it, no, the house stayed where it's.
Oh, it was right there?
Yeah, it was right there, it's where.
The house, the house was moved in years ago.
Yeah, years ago it was moved in, but we did not move it.
Okay, so the, the, in nineteen, um, in two, in two thousand twenty-two, the valuation was thirteen thousand three sixty-three. See, I was thinking that was just vacant land, but it was the house.
Uh-huh.
The house was there, okay.
Yeah, the house was there with, with the property.
Okay, our granddaughter actually said that house needs to burn, and when she found out we bought it, she's like, why you what?
I think it had been vacant for probably twelve years, I don't know, something like that, it'd been vacant for a long time.
All right, so on about a quarter acre.
Quarter acre, yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
That's all I have.
Okay.
I will hear from the assessor now.
First, I just want to address to the board real quick, um, the stuff that I initially sent Garrity, uh, there were comps, but not in the report that was saved in our main file, but there is a comp report out there, it just wasn't in the initial uh, documentation that I usually send, but it is out there. Um, I will, like I said, I'll get that sent to you, but for the time being, I, if you need me, I have the report pulled up right here, if you want to view that here.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to go through it.
Okay, so, this is the house right here, uh, it went back, it went back on full value starting in twenty-three, from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-two, it was on salvage value at five dollars a square foot. And then you also put in, you have to also add in the land value, and that's what you get for those eight years of what the value of the property was because of the condition that it was in.
So it remained the same?
Yes, well, I mean, depending on how the land values are and all that, but it's been on salvage value for eight years.
Okay.
And then now it's back on full market value based on the work that was done. I have some interior pictures of the property.
Okay.
So here's the, uh.
Are you guys, did it all that?
We hired it though.
Yeah, we hired it, done.
Okay.
When we bought it, I told them we was two of them to do it ourselves, we hadn't hired somebody.
Oh.
We had, it's nothing fancy, but. It serves its purpose.
And that's all we've got for those pictures.
Okay.
Um, and then here's the location on Northeast Fiftieth and North Douglas. Here's green pastures over here, and pretty much deep in the heart of, uh, the town of Spencer. Where's the location? Um, but yeah, it was a one thousand dollar purchase, invalid purchase, based on the condition that it was in back in August of twen, uh, sorry, um.
It was July, I think.
Yeah, uh, actually, uh, August of twenty-two, so, yeah, officially.
August.
Um, and we have it on for a hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, we decided to lower it to one eleven eight hundred. Um, and then I'll, if you'd like, I'll go ahead and pull up the report for you guys. And to let you know, we have a full-fledged remodel on it based on the work that was done, and so we have to, we gave it the max remodel percentage on it, so it changes the, um, effective year built to two thousand six. So it's a nineteen fifty-nine year build, but now that, the full remodel, and there, and now gives it a new year built of two thousand six based on the remodel. And we're using comps, we're not comparing, we're not using any comparables um that have brick. We're using uh comparables that are just like his on the exterior frame siding, frame hardboard. And his is eight, we have it at eight forty here, the other square footage is, and we can't...
I can't, I can't see.
Okay, um, sorry, let me zoom in for you, I apologize.
Okay.
Just tell me what you would like me to do and I'll do that for you.
All right. Where's that property at?
So here's the subject property.
Yep.
And then here's subject, here's property one, two, four, and then here's three, and here's four.
Okay.
And then here's the summary of everything. We jump into, like, up to the comps. And see, that's, we made it to where we're not using any brick, we're using everything that's frame siding or frame hardboard that are pretty much similar and we're having to pull up, you know, pull comps that are just as like, like theirs. Cause not all properties are gonna be the same within a, you know, walking distance. We had to kinda go out a little bit. But not too far out. But other than that, that's uh, that's where we're at.
And your median value you found on the comps was a hundred and five thousand?
One hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred forty-seven.
Okay, what's that, a hundred and five thousand seven thirty-nine?
That's the minimum adjusted sale price.
I got you.
Yes, sir.
And the mean adjusted sale price is a hundred and fourteen thousand?
Three hundred thirty-eight dollars.
Okay. All right, anything else?
At this current moment, I do not have anything else.
All right. So uh, any response from the tax payer?
I do wanna say, commented on the floors being pretty, they aren't wood. They're, they're not, they're not wood floors, just so you know if that makes a difference.
The what?
The flooring.
Oh.
It's some of that, what do they call it, luxury vinyl tile, yeah.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, so the mean adjustment price, is that off of these four comps?
Yes.
Okay. And, and the minimum adjusted price, that's off of these four comps also?
All these numbers are based on the four properties in this comp report.
So we're uh, and I, and I don't have that average here. But back again, the closest square footage to that, that house is nine seventy-one, and the, the furthest one a little away on them four comps is eleven twenty-five. So, you know, that's something I, I'd like to, I'd like to put to y'all's attention, that we're, we're dealing with an eight hundred and fifty, and the comps that they're, they're comping off of, it's the closest one we got to it is a nine hundred and seventy-one square foot. And to me, that makes a difference. I mean, I don't know.
I don't think it does to them.
You know.
I understand. And I want you to know that we're gonna have a copy of all his stuff so that we can look at it and uh draw information from it.
And like I said, I'll, I'll, I'll finish, I'm, I'm done, and I'll finish with the, with the deal, you know. I, I just, I don't have a problem one thing, I feel like the fair market, but I just feel like at a hundred and thirty-one dollars a square foot, that's just a little bit too much compared to what their comps are and, and prices and stuff, so...
Do you have city water?
Yes, I do.
And gas and electric?
City, sir. I am on propane.
I can't, I wanna say something else. Mike, I think you're the one that door talked to on the phone.
Well, you, you, you talked to another gentleman who has the name Mike.
Oh, I was gonna say, you were really nice every time we, so it was a different Mike. Okay, well, you're nice today too, though.
Yeah, the other one is usually pretty thorough when he tries to go over
Yeah.
the homeowners on anything, so...
Well, he was, he was very nice.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Sure.
Well, appreciate you, you were well prepared.
And so we'll, you'll meet Friday, we heard that part on the other.
Right. Email that.
Are we mailing, are we mailing to you in Ufala?
Yes.
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 Okay, maybe you don't get Friday out of Ufala, I don't know.
We, uh, well, we're here now till, I think we're going back tomorrow, uh, our Wednesday, but we'll be back down there.
Okay.
So we'll get up there.
I'll also send an email out the day that we process that, so if you check your email, it should be out Friday anyway.
Okay.
So, but uh, you should get the physical copy at some point.
Okay.
I'm feeling good, I'm weak, you know, but...
Not in any pain?
Yeah, I'm still pain, but you know, uh...
He's a pretty stoic guy, and just to see him not...
Did you drive?
No, he's, he can drive now, the doctor said he can drive now, but...
I, I, what I was gonna say is just, you know, if you don't believe and it's not your time, I'll just say this. They, they had been doing tests on me, and everybody kept coming back and saying it was a cyst. And I'm still, I was, the last fourteen months I've been sick, 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 and I started losing weight. So anyhow, they finally done another one, and, and it come back as cancer. But they, they went back on CT scans and stuff all the way back to two thousand fifteen, it would've been in me. So it's a miracle that it wasn't ever wearing me, so just, just believe in it.
I don't think I catch it.
Well, then when they do CT scans, they do them without contrast or with contrast, and it had to be done with contrast to see that. Um, and you'd have lots of kidney stones. So they always do CT scans with no contrast when they have kidney stones. So they just kept thinking it was a cyst.
So it's a miracle, but uh, you know, the good Lord, thank me here, so. One other thing I wanna say is thank y'all for y'all's time.
Oh, sure.
Cause I'm gonna, I know you, you're doing this on your...
On your own time?
Yeah.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE number ninety-four, which is the last one on our topic today. And uh, any comments from the board?
We have...
Citizens participation?
We have four tomorrow?
Uh, yes, believe so. So uh...
This is LLC person?
Uh, yes, yeah. So I believe, um, yeah, we do have Ryan LLCs, that's March. Do we have four or five? Pardon me, I thought it was five. Okay, yeah, five.
Yeah, it's five.
So Ryan LLC, again, I haven't had any of those withdrawn. We'll have the twenty-six, we will not be meeting on Thursday, Decision Day will be Friday, the twenty-eighth.
And we have excess.
Correct. That will also be Friday, yes. And I should be sending the agenda off for that sometime today. Um, next week, we're gonna be meeting the first, the second, not the third, on the fourth. That is our day with Grant Beatles again.
Wait a minute, this is next week?
Uh, yes, yeah, talking about next week, yeah, so...
We do Monday.
Monday, Tuesday, we will not be meeting Wednesday, yes. Thursday will be Grant Beatles. Uh, I did check my email to clarify on the packets, so yeah. Um, it looks like for the first one, that had must've just got mixed up with the Ryan LLC stuff. So um, again, if you ever notice that, uh, just let me know, and we can get it off to you as soon as possible, but awesome. And then, um, yeah.
As soon as I get back to the office, I'll let you, uh, send you right away.
No worries. No worries, yeah.
All right. Well, every day and next Thursday, except Wednesday.
Correct. And every day this week except Thursday.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take some of that, oh, I moved quickly adjourned.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I fixed that waiting till...
Oh, let me, um, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, you're good.
Before I try to plan anything else. This is um Arts Festival week, so we're trying to, we're gonna get rain.
It's what's gonna rain.
Been begging for rain for months and it finally happens.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Fertile has a yard for this.
This, yes, yes. I got a, I got a new...